So, what matters to you?
Thank you very much. Well, councillor Sargeant, I propose to the council chairman.
And then to the second one?
Yes, second one.
And, all or another nominations to take vote on, not them. We favor, so, now to councillor Dever.
Thank you, and people of the council. And I welcome everybody in my office, of the most popular turn out tonight, with more than I can see. But welcome anyway all of you. Second item on the agenda is to have a vice chair. I'd like to have him here for any day this week. Come on, let's say it again.
Well, I think it's nice that I've had a little man with that. A lot of experience at Torridge Council as well. Those who are.
And if we ever see a camera looking at us. Everything.
Everything does.
I should pay his apologies.
Apologies from councillor Manley and councillor Chalmers.
Councillor Manley's not very well and councillor Chalmers is in Torrington on the hosting. For his chairman's announcement, well, I've no announcement particularly to make. I'm very sorry that there's been a lot of misinformation being circulated amongst the public. I've got some emails, that's another country. Worried, worried to death about the fact that houses will be built, holiday homes will be built, on every green field in the area, completely erroneous to the point. Where it's troubled, Flushing, Scarehead, I don't know, but completely erroneous. There is no intention to build on the green gaps between Northern, Appledore, Appledore and Westwood.
Chris, what do you do?
There is no intention of talking like this.
Chairman, I don't just...
Yeah, councillor.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Derek Sargeant, I'm the councillor for Westwood Hove. And I'd just like to reiterate that I personally would never vote for any development on any of the greenfield sites between Appledore and Northern, Northern and Westwood Hove, Westwood Hove and Appledore. I don't know about my other councillors, but I've been inundated with emails. People phone me, they're worried about we're going to advocate building on these greenfield sites. We are not, and I will never, ever vote for such an aim. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I also have the same opinion. What I don't want to say is what's between Northern and Westwood Hove, that between Appledore and Northern, I want to talk about the tranches. Not on landscape, I don't want to see any roads in the area. So I shall not vote for anything that ascertains to have anything non-structural like that between Appledore and Northern. Thank you.
Well, as my fellow councillors are making the declarations that I would have liked to have made, but what do you know me and you know my views on building in the rural gap where it isn't required. So I too share their reservations and I too can put hand on heart and say I would definitely not support anything which goes into the gap that we have between Appledore and Westwood.
Councillor Hayne?
Yeah, I welcome the councillors' declarations, but basically that's not the point, is it? We're not, we're, surely you wouldn't vote when you didn't vote for holiday self-advancement now? But that's not the point, it's whether the policy that you brought yourself to Torridge is strong enough and whether there are any loopholes in it which should be encouraged by developers to do.
Well, that's why, and I just speak.
That's it, then, I just speak.
Then I, that is the point, whether the policy is strong enough. So if you councillors don't want development, then one hopes that you will have voted for a stronger policy which doesn't allow any loopholes.
I'll answer that, councillor.
I'll answer that point by asking you to look at Gen 12A and we'll have a full and proper discussion on it. And I sincerely hope that when we discuss that, any reservations you have will be answered. That's what we're here for.
Right, well, I'll bring it round to the previous members of the steering group. I'm thanking them, and I do thank them for the work we've done. I've been involved since the outset of the Neighbourhood Plan 2017. And in March this year, we went out with the draft policies we had. And we had a good response to those draft policies. But ever since then, all we've done is nitpick, a word here, a word there, all to this, all to that. We just know that how many times we've changed it. And here we are now, in December, from March to December, no progress at all. And it got completely unmanaged in the end. And we've got to get this plan done. All the work we've formulated, these policies, has been done. We've done all the work, and we've done that based on the public consultation. And the public meetings we've had and the views of the public that we've considered all the way through. The city is speaking to my side, this has got every use in talk. But it, it, there was a lot thrown on behind the scenes which really undermined the whole process. So it was decided by full council, not merely just full councillors, that we would take the process forward with the draft policies we've got, with any amendments that we decide. As has been mentioned as well on the agenda today. We'll take it to fruition, but there's a six-week public consultation period here to run, a statutory six-week period where certain agencies actually consult this, as well as the public. So anything that people don't like or anything the statutory consulates don't like, they can make a policy in that sector and then after against it. And it could well be that is an act of eye against any of the policies, so we may have to go back and get a staff consultant of the public, I don't know, but that's still a possibility. So it's not a done deal at all. And even after the six-week period, when an inspector looks at it and then it goes for an inspector to consider, it ends up with Torridge council, district council having to run a referendum on all, in all, in North America. So at the end of the day, it's the public who will decide if we want to climb or not. But before we get to that, there's another consultation still to come. And now we're doing this way with this subcommittee. Everybody would welcome to come around to the meetings. We've got the 15-minute period to public to update contributions. You can email, you can write in, you can phone me with information. Nobody's cutting anybody out, but we've got to get this done. We can't let it keep dragging on like this. We've got our members just preparing time.
Joe, you want to speak?
No, it's false, so.
Well, no, I just want to speak on the pretty part of the council.
Just a moment, just a moment.
You've given your vision of events.
Just a moment, just a moment. Just a moment. I was introducing a great councillor and a highly consultant who's going to help take its score in the town, certainly the pre-sufficient county. So anybody who still has the chance to talk to you, that is a matter of fact. Councillor Hayne?
It's not, you stated that the steering group was delaying things, I dispute that. We got to almost a fine stage of all the policies. There's just one policy which is of concern. We asked for a vote, we weren't allowed to have a vote. It clearly states in terms of reference that a vote should be allowed where there is open census. No vote was allowed by your chair, you wound up meeting and effectively wound up steering group, which you weren't allowed to do in terms of reference, I should say. Now we've got a new staff committee, you say that, which hasn't actually been included in terms of its membership, you say that the public can have their say, well, three minutes each, 15 minutes, that's not much of a say compared with the situation which was under the steering group, when you had full participation of the public representatives, which is what's supposed to happen in the name of a planned process. So basically, we've got a worse situation.
Well, councillor Hayne, you've been involved and you've been invited to continue to be involved, but you've chosen not to. And I don't understand. That should be wrong. But there was a lot, there was a lot more than what you've just stated upon that caused this. But we'll move on then from the chairman's announcements, declarations of interest, members of this...
Councillors, this evening, you must choose between Chris's policy, NMP18, the amended version, supported by the former steering group. Now, I know that some of you favour Chris's version, but to you, I have to say, stop and think what you're voting for. I mean, to be honest, even Chris's fans agree that clause B needs rewrite. I mean, take a look at it and see how it moves up four local plan policies in two separate areas of land. Modern policies mean bad planning. Everyone hates them and so should we. Right now, you can't adopt Chris's NMP18 even if you wanted to because it's not fit for purpose. Worse still, clause B supports new holiday homes on land with no existing buildings outside the development boundary in the area between Appledore, Northern and Westwood Hove. Read it if you left the evening. With land at now on sale for £2 million, this policy is inviting an awful lot of home holiday home developments. You might think that Torridge won't commit these developments, you may think that they can't build outside the development boundary, you may think that Chris's policy has safeguards to prevent these developments. To you, I just say one word: now. Now was outside the development boundary, wasn't it? Have you really forgotten how easy it was for a determined developer to overcome very similar policies? In any case, if you don't want holiday houses between settlements, why are you voting for a policy that explicitly supports them? Councillors, if you really don't want these developments, you must vote for a policy that stops these developments. You must vote for the amended policy, NMP18. Councillor's neighbourhood plan is about public support. In our consultation in the spring, no one wanted holiday housing in the countryside. Not one person. In our steering group, no one wanted Chris's policy except you, Chris.
I wish you would keep saying...
Councillors, we are all neighbours in this room and we all know Northern, we know the policy, NMP18, is not fit for purpose. So let's vote the amended NMP18 and let's work together to bring the neighbourhood plan home. Thank you very much.
I wish you would say it's Chris's policy, because it's not Chris's policy. That policy has arrived that after English rewrite, which meant you were involved in as well, because I've got some of the original policy tonight that you wrote. Who would like to speak next, gentlemen there now coming this time? Can you give your name please?
Yeah, Keith Wood.
Yeah.
I want to say, probably my worst friend, the councillor. Good evening. Before retiring, I had 25 years' experience with the planning authorities, a qualified planning officer, and have been actively involved on a voluntary basis in planning issues in Torridge. I'd like to say a few words about the policy, NMP18, on tourism, tractions and accommodation. The policy you are considering tonight will allow for more new build tourism accommodation than even the current local plan policy, the NMP18. Which, and that policy allows for the reuse of existing buildings in the countryside, but only allows new build if it is directly related to an existing tourism attraction or improves existing tourism accommodation. Furthermore, where proposals are also in the undeveloped coast, which includes the land between Appledore, Northern and Westwood Hove, paragraph 453 of the local plan makes the council's intent crystal clear, and I quote that, 'Tourism accommodation which does not utilise existing buildings should be located outside the undeveloped coast, outside the area we've been talking about.' This fully testifies a approach of the now displaned steering group version of the NMP18, which supports new tourism accommodation but through the utilisation of existing buildings. The policy before you ignores all this and contrary to the local plan, it allows for new build tourism accommodation throughout the open countryside and Northern Parish. This could be single units right through to landowners such as the permission of that or indeed an extension for that. At first glance, you might think the policy seems reasonable. You may argue that other policies provide environmental safeguards, but I'm afraid there is no guarantee in preventing such development. Similar landscape policies were effectively overruled by the district council when the natural they had planning applications approved. The neighbourhood plan is about humility-led vision for the area and in the regional public consultations, issues and values of greatest concern were green spaces and the environment. Northern Parish council includes important areas of the countryside which help separate Appledore and Northern and Westwood Hove. The unspoiled character, appearance and tranquility of this largely undeveloped area also helps ensure the settlements retain their individual identities. It is highly valued by local residents as reflected in the neighbourhood plan consultation results. Local people feel very strongly about its protection as witnessed by the over 200 rejection letters to the now holiday home planning application, including those from both Appledore and Northern residents. In addition, there was massive opposition to the major marina and avenue development proposal to properly report. If the current policy is approved now, it will invite unnecessary pressure in the future for new holiday homes in our ever shrinking open countryside. I therefore urge you to reject the policy as it stands and to fully reconsider the direction that the neighbourhood plan should take on this issue. Thank you very much.
You're here.
What's going on, I've got some comments on that.
Lady, lady, do you want to speak?
Yes. I understand you. Yeah, Jane, Jane Hayne, Appledore. Now, this is about protecting the countryside. Councillors, I want to talk about the countryside, we're all very proud of it, we're all agreed that visitors love it. So why are some of you so desperate to build holiday homes on it? Yesterday, I went for a walk and on my walk, I imagined a huge estate of holiday houses as now. I imagined Chichester Homes or another developer lining Longleigh with holiday homes. And I imagined how few people would bother to walk or take pride in this landscape. You may say this will never happen, you may hope it will never happen. Why then are some of you planning to vote for a policy, NMP18, that supports such developments on green fields where there are no buildings between Appledore and Northern and Westwood Hove? You may say that Torridge won't allow it because it's outside the development boundary. Well, they allowed that last year, didn't they? You may say that NMP18 has safeguards to stop this kind of development. Well, if NMP18 is trying to stop this kind of development, how come it supports it? And if you really don't want to see holiday homes, developments in our beautiful countryside, why would you vote for the amended NMP18 policy and stop such developments? After all, the amended policy is more clearly written and easier to use. Our countryside, especially between our settlements, is shrinking. It will all go if we don't protect it. And the last thing it needs is a policy inviting developers to build holiday homes. Councillors, we all of us have birthright and responsibility. Our birthright is to enjoy traditional Devon countryside that we can walk to. Our responsibility is to hand on to our children. Please vote for the amended NMP18.
Thank you, very admirable, so to speak. Councillors, I want to ask you on behalf of the team of Northern, to use standing orders on some committees to reinstate public participation. The public members of the steering group have been unjustly banned from taking part in the work of your committee and must change. Remember, you are committed to working with the residents' associations and some members of the public wrote your policies. They have vital information that you need to draw on. Before you say it's okay, we can have those three minutes. Have you ever tried writing a detailed planning case in just about 400 words? It doesn't work. And how exactly are the public meant to contribute to discussions at these meetings? As things stand, we can't answer your questions. We can't give you vital information when you need it and you can't offer any support or feedback. You're going to meet all of those things in the coming months. After the second consultation, you will be amending policy. Without public participation, those policy amendments have as much democratic credibility as a banana republic. As things stand, you won't get better public support and you will lose the referendum. So why not co-op some of the public members or set up a public advisory committee? Before you are obliged by practical necessity. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? No? Like, how did you contribute? Right, we move on then. I'd like to name on the agenda to consider draft policies here with, but I think members of Rock and Kelly, councillor Sargeant and councillor Tisdale have only had these policies, they've had copies of the policies. I think tonight, you know, to move on to 12, I think, an update on the land, I can give that, that tech. Councillor Chalmers?
Chair, may I say something about the draft policies?
Yes.
At the last meeting we've been to, we did raise the point that the format of the plan needed amending. And I'd like to ask what proposals there are now to reexamine the way that the plan was presented. There is confusion, I think we established, in the way that the headings were set out. It's not clear at all. There are also elements of the policy which I feel need to be elaborated, particularly affordable housing, which gets very scant attention and gets a prime consideration for local people. I really do think that needs reexamining in detail, particularly the provision of 30% affordable homes in the immediate development. I would like to see that appear in the plan. So I would just urge the committee to reconsider that particular aspect.
Well, only affordable homes, that was right at the start there, that's been moved from where it was when you last saw it, it's been moved to the start. And we've had the discussion over affordable homes, where the new North Dagenham Torridge local plan completely adequate to suggest affordable homes. Nonetheless, we couldn't draft a policy ourselves, the steering group looked at it a few times, if we couldn't draft one that would improve on what's already in the local plan, we couldn't improve it, 30% affordable. There was nothing that really could add, we couldn't add any value, we couldn't change. So to write a separate policy on affordable homes was felt bad, still a good proposal.
Whereas there's something about X. Affordables is an area where I think the Northern Torridge local plan is crystal clear and pretty good, but I think what we might need is something making it rather clearer perhaps than the wording does at the moment, that the neighbourhood plan and the local plan taken together will form a development plan. So just because something's not in the neighbourhood plan doesn't mean that it won't be part of the development plan. And the statutory requirement from section 38.6 of the 2004 Planning and Compulsory Purchase Act is that where regard is to be had to the development plan, it will be the starting point and unless material considerations indicate otherwise, it should be followed and decisions should be made on it. So it refers specifically to the development plan, which will be the local plan and neighbourhood plan. Now, there is a requirement on the neighbourhood plan to be in conformity with the strategic objectives of the local plan. So as has been said, it wouldn't be possible to change a strategic objective in the local plan. The purpose of a neighbourhood plan is, if you like, to look at the local plan and to say, are there areas where we need to be more specific or we need to change or renew what is said in the local plan? Back in the, in the early days, one of the first neighbourhood plans that I've done, for instance, was up in Tanyan Oxonshire. And what I had essentially was, there's going to be a certain amount of housing and it's going to come on these comparative few large sites. And they decided they didn't want it in a few large sites, they wanted more smaller sites. Now, that's the sort of thing which would be done by a neighbourhood plan. It's, it's not a question of saying, we don't want that many. You are, the government would be delighted if you did decide you wanted more housing, but that's not the purpose of the requirement for the neighbourhood plan. But what it is, is to say, to take the local plan and say, how can we make this more appropriate to the local context and to local aspirations without going against the strategic objectives? And of course, the other thing that you have to be in conformity with is national planning policy as in National Planning Policy Framework. And you have to support sustainable development as well. So those are your statutory requirements for a neighbourhood plan. And that is what the examiner, when they come to look at it, will be looking to see if he performs it. I would suggest, Chair, that it might be worth looking at something in the introduction to the plan though, to emphasise the fact that this is not a standalone document, but that it is something which can be read alongside the plan.
And at the start of the process, all the green, the heritage and green spaces were the main considerations actually in the plan, and that's why they started the draft policy work. So we do welcome Lawrence or councillor Sherry, and do welcome anybody putting anything forward or any draft that has been considered, because Jackie Mouches spoke, whatever, Appledore residents' association, or whatever, or anybody else wants to put forward this subject, we would welcome it. I certainly do want to. I don't want to run this on you, in fact, my man's got to be packing it and let somebody else face it. And I'm not a quitter, and I was keen right from the off that we're going to have a neighbourhood plan together. And I'm only been frustrated that it's been dragging on this last 12 months. But there's no intention from my part, and I'm sure from the rest of this subcommittee, to cut anybody out from the whole committee and be involved. We want that. And that's all I can say on that. So both policies, in the act, by the next reason, being January, Lawrence and Pete, sorry, councillor Sherry, councillor Hayne, I would be welcome if you come forward. If something you'd like on the formal, a bit more than just a paragraph, that'd be fine. And it belongs to people, and we're two and a half here today, although, David Chalmers, councillor Chalmers has been involved since May. Councillor Manley is the new one to be involved in the neighbourhood plan, but she's quite to speak a bit. So I think the rest of the considered draft policies, I would leave because I'd rather get on to 12 in a minute, and I think that's the new one, everybody's going to hear about. I'll just mention then, on 10, the agenda, we didn't want one of them, suggested this future development site, so we're thinking there. of them to be designated as future development sites in the neighbourhood plan. So I don't want to answer that every wrong reading, but I should have. So we never got to respond to them, four of them. And this letter that I drafted, which I wanted to put to the last meeting group, going through a briefing, has now applied to all of the plans and was saying, thank you very much for submitting your application with considering numbers, being considered plan, but for various planning reasons, do not be included in the neighbourhood plan. So we do not have any designated future development sites in our neighbourhood plan draft at present. That's that one. Eleven on the agenda, consider maps and lists, well, or maybe email. I can get it. My name on the top there, I hope everybody else will not too.
Sorry, my name's Chris.
I don't think it's a good idea. But anyway, the alternative word in the, as well as the word we've got in front, the NMP eighteen. So everybody's looked at this, something, councillor Sherry, councillor Deist, the former, and the alternative word, the full form there. It has changed slightly again, slightly again, since the last meeting, it's only slightly different. But anyway, anyone that can, we don't want to send over the one by. Councillor Sherry?
There's just one particular, specific one that I'd like to share, which is that in the minutes of the last meeting, steering group, it was felt that the wording excluding Applewood should be removed from the text. It hasn't been, so I'd just like to point that out. The song key was that that was inappropriate at the steering group meeting. And the other thing I would just say, in terms of the amended version, is that I would very much support the amended version. I do like the way it distinguishes B and C, and C specifically mentions in the open countryside, which I think used a definition.
Yeah, I'd like, Chair, that's what the councillor just said, the amended version, it clearly separates out the elements of the policy in terms of settlements, outside settlements, green spaces and in the open countryside. And it's a wording which secures the policy against developers slipping through developing into the green spaces. I hope that the speakers today have made that case clearly to the presence of this subcommittee.
Thank you. Now, councillor Sherry, right, that should have been amended, that excluding Applewood. It really doesn't speak to them. Okay, there, anybody want to make any proposals to councillor Tisdale?
Chris, I'd like to hear what the planning officer has to say. He knows a lot more about the subtlety and the ambiguity that there may be in the first version, shall we say, and how rigorous, and does it meet all the tests that everybody would want it to be? And is it accountable? Does it meet what people's aspirations are? I think there are two elements that need to be considered. One is what the policy, how it could be argued in, be like technical planning terms. But they clearly inferred from a lot of people today who have looked at it and have come to conclusions which I might not necessarily almost feel are fully justified by the wording that's there. But the fact that so many people could come to those conclusions suggests that it might need rewording in terms of clarification. Having been to several meetings of the OCA, the eighteen last time, I think the subdivision into one extra paragraph there was beneficial. I hate to say that as we have been forced to shut from moving things on, but it might be a question of listening to what's been said, reflecting on whether therefore policy can be doing its job if it has led to this degree of concern, and bringing able-bodied draft back for consideration next time.
Can I come back and say, having, thank you, Chair, having read through the email we received, which is what we've seen again tonight, it's very subtle changes, but there again, we thought that other sites were protected, we talked about that, and how that has gone against, if you will, public expectations. And I'd be happier if we were endorsing a document that everybody is going to be happy with at the end of the day. It's no producing something and saying, we're going to stick to this, and then the public come back six months later and say, we don't like that. So in all probability, at some point in time, we might however have to change anyway if we retain the first draft, and I'll call it first draft. And I have huge admiration for the guys who wrote this, if that's largely you, Chris. You shouldn't be the badger in this, you should be complimented for at least putting something together. But it's a first draft. And any first draft you look at, you say, well, how about good a tone, so? Because then that fulfills what people are expecting. So can I say, I'd be happier with something that has pretty well people's support, whatever form of words. And I don't think it needs to be pedantic while we're booking this, I'd vote for that. And to hear the planning officer basically endorse what we're saying, that perhaps a few subtle changes would make it acceptable for everybody, and then everybody would go happy tonight. And if you want to propose it along those general lines, I'll happily propose it. And that doesn't undervalue anything that you've done.
No, it's not a case of, it's not a case of vanity. The policies that we had out in March, eighteen, eighteen, which we talked about, has changed quite a bit since the one that we went out with. So it's not a case of me writing anything, it's a case of what's gone over time has changed, and dragged on and dragged on, and then you think you've got it right, and then you come back to the next meeting and work. So that's right, it's not involved in all this. But I mean, if you made it a wonderful, you're saying that we adopt the amended version.
Yeah, I'd say you don't want to have a job.
Well, Graham, you can copy it again, too. Yeah, I mean, I think that spoken of by some of the public, is on tourism attractions and accommodation. And there are one, two, three, four, five clauses in it. And the first one is A, it says, within settlement development boundaries, so that's within the development boundaries there. Proposals for sustainable tourism attractions, leisure developments, mix and range of styles of new tourist accommodation, extremely applicable, it's necessary here. Because we don't, it doesn't read quite, but we've got extremely applicable because we don't want any new policy or virginity. We don't want an app, and that's why it says extremely applicable. So that's all we've been looking at, we've decided to take that argument. Associated touring facilities and services will be supported where they enhance the quality and/or diversity of local tourism offer, and do not detract from the character of the area residential meaning to protect the landscape, environment or heritage assets. So we've always agreed with that. And B, in the area defined on map B two, which you've not figured out, and it will have, which covers the area actually, proposals for new or extensions to existing tourism accommodation and attractions will be supported, provided they cannot reasonably be located outside the area defined in map B two. So this is where you go outside development boundaries now with potential tourism and accommodation. And proposals to comply with policies NMP two, these are the neighbourhood plan and three, and the North Devon Torridge Local Plan, which we've got to be in the plans for the area. And in the case of tourism accommodation, they utilise existing buildings. Now, one of the words I read that clause, that if somebody comes up with a very good devoted eye to accept, they won't be bothered. But if somebody came up with a wonderful tourism attraction and they wanted to build outside development boundaries, because it couldn't be accommodated within development boundaries, if you can only utilise existing buildings, you might lose a good economic application or something. It might never happen, but it's nothing to do with building holiday homes in the area because that certainly would never be available, even on the tourism policy of the area. So that's B. And C is in the open countryside, just in the countryside, proposals for newer extensions to existing tourism accommodation and attractions will be supported, provided that they cannot reasonably be located outside the local countryside, in other words, within development boundaries. And proposals complying with the North Devon Torridge Local Plan, policy BM seventy, year eighteen. D is improved access to Westwood Beach will be supported. I think we're all going to change that because it's a red flag down there at present. That's been for a long time. And E, proposals for all weather tourism facilities, providing the year round use in this bill will be supported. So that is eighteen, that is the three words of eighteen. If I read out the original one, you'd think, well, what's the difference? There are certain differences. But we voted to accept it, really the amendment, so that will become our policy in eighteen.
I can treat with you, isn't it? Just a couple of things, I haven't reached the goal of this major plan, not my thing. But I just feel that what the general public, all they want from NMP eighteen, however, with the trees, plain English, it sounds like council speed, in just plain English, much easier for the people in the spectrum, everybody are looking at it. But I just want to make a point here, there's a lot around this room, and a lot of us are quite ancient, and I say that because I'm ancient. You know, Torridge had to, they're covered by the old land, they have to reduce fifteen thousand new houses here this year. You all have to take our share, we've got five hundred above us with those, et cetera. That document is weakened by excluding Applewood. You can't exclude Applewood, you have to take your share too. How many of you live in houses, shall we say, less than thirty years old? Because you would be considered a new kind of string into the area, taking greenfield signs. You've got all the young people and need housing. The problem is, when they get the planning permission, excuse me, deviating slightly now, because you know this better than anyone, they get the planning permission, X number of affordable houses, they come back after three months and they say, oh, we're not making our twenty percent, they improve it and relaxation is strong. But you must, I remember, you've got eight sites there, eight sites you've got there, you've ruled out everyone, you know, like that weakens the case, you've got to be looking, you're probably thinking for the future. And we can't all be all this crap, you know?
There's already thousands of advocates in this area, everybody.
Chair, can I just, yeah, absolutely, well, we're waiting on the twelve houses in Wood Road. So, you know, it may well be need for more of them, but we're not in green spaces in the development sites possibly, but not in the green spaces.
Well, that's one of the main, you know better. This is one of the main drivers of getting this neighbourhood plan home and done. Because we've not got that protection until we get this planning level.
Chair, can I just pick up on the website, because I've said several times.
No, yeah, I think it needs drastic. Can you get me that, please? Right, we've done that, can we look at members, and I don't know who's got copies of the policies, can we look at the draft policy, the NMP? I can read it.
I've got a couple now, I'll say so, we've got, they've been recruiting in January to get things moving and get production going. And hopefully, there will be a secure future for future generations to come.
Quite correct.
Going away, realising that cases aren't over, this, we are in fact on your side, and it's great to see this feeling of conciliation tonight, and I hope you all will go away happy.
I'm glad you did all turn up, because it's been a filthy night to turn up. I was only going to snow out. C, C on the tally.
Right, off we go.
I was very, very pleased to learn, and I was in agreement with councillor Kendon this, with regards to his comments pertaining to the shipyard beginning, new employment with the prospects of apprentices and training and jobs very soon after Christmas and into the new year. Because we, not only do we have the Faroe Islands of Scotland, the trawlers, but there are quite an abundance of inquiries coming in.
Really?
According to the telephone calls that I have received.
Great. Say that again?
Democracy is about representing the people.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, it's no good doing something which the people are not going to agree to anyway.
Right, so you think it...
It's equal power, isn't it?
Yeah.
We are the service of the people.
Right, okay. So, there you go.
The orange of the world.
Nice one.
Listen, I sat on plans for a lot of years, if you go right back about twelve years, fifteen years, when I sat on plans and you listen to what people say and you've got the officer's recommendation, and I always used to say, well, can the officer please answer those questions? That's what we're here for.
Well, I'm going to say one thing, and that is, I mean, obviously, I haven't been to a lot of councils, I've seen you a lot in action, but tonight, I mean frankly, I wanted you as Prime Minister, you were standing, I voted for you, you did so well.
We, we...
That's a load of rubbish, but do you respect me?
It's going through my head. Sound like my wife, be, be a politician, you're not tonight, no.
Well, meeting tonight, the meeting tonight demonstrates that democracy works. The democratically elected character working in conjunction with the public to resolve this in the last on the development plan, we've done that.
Yeah.
Positive meetings, which will give great pleasure and comfort to a lot of people in Northern Parish.
Are you happy?
I'm very happy.
Right, thank you very much.